Hey, Pat.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our special city council meeting for October 3rd. And first order of business is roll call. So, Mike Urban.
Sure. Councilmember Guido?
Here.
Councilmember Parks?
Here.
Councilmember Weller?
Here.
Councilmember McCall?
Here.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Benjamin?
Here.
Councilmember Duvin?
Here.
So Mayor Johnson has requested to be excused from this meeting since he wasn't able to be here. I have a motion for excusing him.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So I'd like to welcome everyone to this special council meeting. Mayor Johnson's not here and as Vice Mayor Protem, I'm filling in for the council. The agenda item, since this is a special council meeting, our agenda item is the one that's listed. This is a special meeting initiated by the members of the city council pursuant to RCW 4030 dot zero eight. The purpose of the meeting is requested, as requested is for the city council to discuss feedback and brief from the special town hall meeting held September 26th to discuss options, alternatives to Project Downtown Plan and discuss potential impacts of alternative, options and alternatives to Project Downtown Plan. No final discussion or action will be made at this meeting. As such, there's no provision for public comment as part of the agenda item. So related to that, this is a special meeting. We have to stay to what is the agenda. And so we can only address what's on the agenda and also since there's no final business, there's no opportunity for public comment in this meeting. With that, our, and as noticed, no final decisions or actions are actually made at this meeting. It has to be done at a regular meeting. So with that, what I'd like to do is, yeah, this is a debrief and discussion of the meeting and I'd kind of like to ask the council, how do you want to go about this process? Is it something that just each person shares or do we want to go down the line or is there, is there any preference?
Well, excuse me, one suggestion is that we each give our reflections or themes rather of what we heard at this special meeting last week or at the town hall meeting. And maybe do that five minutes a person and then open it up for discussion.
Other thoughts? Sounds like that's good. Then who would like to start?
I'll go ahead and start if that's okay.
Thank you, Pat. So Pat, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It just adds a little history about this project.
We're working to get her volume up.
Okay. Are we good now? Can you hear me? Is that better?
There were, we have you on some of the speakers but not enough for everybody. Keep, can you keep?
Could keep talking.
If you can be close to the microphone, then.
Okay, how's that?
Marginal.
Better? Not so good?
It's marginal, so please just speak up.
Okay, I'll work my volume too here and see if that helps.
Perhaps somebody else would like to go first and then we can check back.
Pat, we're going to have Megan go first while we work on your sound.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Councilmember Guido?
So I heard a variety of subjects being discussed by concerned citizens who expressed interest in typical issues that face a community. And I would like to spend some time on those that are not related to the downtown project so that we can recognize those and have council have some discussion about those. Of particular interest to me was the citizen who presented the issue around unleashed dogs. And she has presented before during public comment at previous city council meetings. I also am concerned about this because I have heard from several citizens who are concerned about dogs that are not leashed and that have actually attacked their dogs and feeling fairly unsafe about taking their dog out for a walk. So that concerns me. And I've also heard from citizens who live in housing units where their yards are covered in dog waste and their landlords are not enforcing their tenants to pick up the waste. And that's also a concern and definitely a quality of life issue. So that was of concern to me as well as Bryce Erickson coming forward with his concerns related to e-bikes and e-scooters and asking the council to differentiate between those types of devices in terms of speed limits. Heard the message that to do a blanket 15 miles per hour on all of these types of devices is not going to be conducive to safety issues or to the, you know, basically we need to look at how these are different and how they're used differently and in different parts of the city. So those are the, I won't take much more. I do have specific concerns around what we heard related to Project Downtown Pullman, but I'll reserve that for the discussion.
So Pat, will we try you again now? Pat's not on. Okay. So, Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I was appreciative of the feedback that we received last week about all issues. I was not always appreciative of the way in which it was delivered as particularly, or by the things that were said. And I'm going to start by, somebody mentioned that our downtown is ugly and our town is ugly. I was in Issaquah this weekend. I was in North, I was in Auburn and I was in Snoqualmie. And they are indeed beautiful. I'm from Michigan, including Upper Michigan. I am from, I've lived in upstate New York for several years. So I'm familiar with very beautiful areas. What I would, the way I want to respond to the "our town is ugly" comment is that we don't live in a forested area. And the reason we don't is because a university was started here over 100 years ago in an agricultural area can survive the construction because we're not just talking about lifting a sidewalk or lifting concrete or lifting asphalt. We're talking about digging down very deeply so that we can, while we're tearing everything up, let's check the water pipes. Let's check the sewer system. Let's make sure that if there's something that needs to be repaired while we have everything torn up, let's do it now. There's going to be heavy equipment rolling over these roots. There's going to be a lot of chaos around these plants. Trees are plants. And I, an arborist I hope can address that more fully, but that is a very real concern that we need to think about. Speaking to the repair of sewer pipes and water lines, another reason that we're doing this is because we want to put all this beautiful infrastructure over those things underneath and then in one, two, five years have to go back in and dig it all up because we have a pipe break or a main break or a sewer backup. We already have businesses who are having sewer backups because of tree roots. So that's only going to get worse if we don't address it. Our urban trees right now, our trees downtown have a 30-year lifespan. If we save the trees and we leave them in place, that means that probably within five years, outside eight, we're going to have to replace those trees. So do we do it after all the new infrastructure is in place? Break up the sidewalks again, possibly reroute traffic and interrupt business again in three, four, five or eight years? Or do we do it now while we have everything torn up? These are some things that we need to think about. We all want the trees there. I'm not at all negating that thought at all, but we have to be realistic here as well. We may be able to, and I've talked to some city people and I'd like to pursue it further. Perhaps we can transplant some of the trees and move them to other areas in the city, not just the parks. Maybe there are some spots on College Hill that we could put them in or on Pioneer Hill or at Sunnyside Hill. Maybe one of the schools, something like that. Can we think a little broader about what can we actually do with these trees when we have to pull them? Can they be moved? And people say, "Well, but they're already dying, Ann." Well, they're dying because they're in an urban setting. If we put them in a place where there's no concrete, there's no restriction on how much oxygen and water they can get, they may, they may thrive for the rest of their lifespan. So that's a consideration that I'd like us to think about as well. I have heard from downtown business owners, downtown building owners and citizens who say, "Please do not pause this project." I think that that's something that we really need to consider. We've come this far and we're not going to make everybody happy. And people say, "Well, there's grant money. There's grant money." Just because grant money is available does not mean that our application will be approved and that we will get it. I work in the grant world and the nonprofit portion and it's not a given. From year to year, it is not a given. Even we who, the company, the business I work for has a 30-plus year history of getting grant money. But you know what? Some years they say, "No, sorry, we can't," or "Well, you're not going to get this, that much this year." It is soft money, is what's known in the academic world, as many of you know, and it's not guaranteed. So we cannot say, "Put it off a year and we'll for sure get more money." We will, we don't know that. And we have to move, I feel we have to move with what we have now, with the resources we have now, to get this project done and make downtown better and safer.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you. Councilmember Benjamin. You know, I think last time when I talked, I didn't give my fellow council members enough credit. None of us are up here to get paid big money. It's a really difficult thing. Working nine to five, I'm fortunate and I have my own business. I don't have to. But many of these people work long hours and then doing the meetings and juggling a lot of different things. And I think I was really not good. And I appreciate the person who had pointed out, "Maybe you could have said something a little nicer, a little better." And I like to admit when I'm wrong because that's how I grow. Nobody up here wants to kill trees. And I know everybody up here wants the downtown to thrive. I also know that we want to make it walkable. ADA is so very important. But I'm, I just have the five minutes, so I'll go through that and then I just thought it was important for me to say that. On some of the subjects that did come up, the off-leash dogs, of course. I know we've spoken about before and this is a major issue. Sunnyside, I know McGee Park, there's a lot of areas. Mike and I have talked and I think more of an emphasis, in my opinion, on off-street or off-leash dogs. The, the public comment being at the beginning of council, I know this is something that we've talked about. I believe it kind of fell off our radar. And it's something that I think we need to really, really, we need to change, in my opinion. Staying through a full council meeting, it's tough. And it's a labor of love, especially for the citizens, to stay through a council meeting in order to talk. It really is. ADA parking downtown, this is, this is what I was talking about last time that Welch Comer had discussed with us, trees or ADA and so on and so forth. And I'm sure we'll talk about downtown. But ADA needs to be a real big focus. My mom, we went to dinner and my mom asked me, "So you, you want to save the trees?" But I tell you what, I don't want to have to be tripping over roots getting to my, or tip sidewalks getting to my meeting. That kind of killed me. It tears, it tears my soul in two. Especially when we're getting the advice we have. Crosswalks, especially across Stadium Way. Stadium Way is pretty darn dangerous. If anybody's, I walk my dog there every single day, a mile walk. And having lights, especially by the church. Is it Saint James Episc, Saint James Episcopal? Yeah, by Saint James Episcopal. And it's really, really difficult, especially when you have kids. And even those flags, those flags don't do anything. And then guess what? They disappear. So I think, you know, I'm gonna just say one last thing. And that is, I was at a meeting, I had talked to, I had talked to some, some older gentleman and they were telling me, "You know, things downtown, it's been redone a few times in their lifetime." They're a little older than me, you know, in their 80s. And they said, "What really needs to be done is a bypass, is to get the trucks out of downtown." And that, in my opinion, needs to be our focus. Our focus right now is downtown. But our next focus needs to be the bypass. So with that, I'll leave some of the other comments I have regarding age of trees, all of, all of the things that we're going to dive into a little later. But thank you.
Yes, we're going down the line here.
Yes.
I appreciate, Frank, my fellow council members are being this evening. I think it serves us. And I especially sort of appreciate the comments about some of the tone of some of the remarks. We do read your letters. I do anyway. I read every letter. I read every comment. I read all the stuff that comes through next door. I don't do Facebook, but what I can get to, I read it. I strongly suspect that my fellow council members do also. I think just about everybody over the age of four is aware that trees produce shade. I've been looking at this. Nathan and I have had several discussions about the dark skies, cool cities. That has been a topic of mine for almost 20 years now. I know what canopy cover percentage is. I know what light are, ortho imagery is. I know what heat islands are. I know what tree equity scores are and how they are derived. My brother-in-law, James Luce, is the principal urban forester in the city of Bellingham. If you've read their forest.
That others have said before I was able to get back on. But what I wanted to touch on briefly was a little bit of history with this project. And first of all, as many of you will recall, this started back in 2019 with the BDS Main Street Project or Downtown Project where we had a lot of community input in terms of what people wanted to see in our community. And hands down, Main Street took the main focus. So we're trying to follow along with that initial feedback that we got from our citizens. And then when the funds became available sadly as a result of COVID, and that was in 2021, we had the opportunity to really have a solid project come to fruition with the addition of the ARPA funds that we are going to use for this project. As Eileen stated, this project was originally determined to be an engineering project with an infrastructure project. Everything else was like a bonus after those priorities were taken care of. And when I'm talking about the bonus, I'm talking about streets. I'm talking about the beautification of the downtown. I'm talking about all of those other things that we may or may not be able to do depending on what we find when finally open up Main Street. So there's some background on that. And I was one of the members of the committee that was on the selection for the contractors for this project. And we did end up with Welch Comer because of their experience in doing exactly what we wanted them to do in terms of the infrastructure and renovating, updating Main Street. So now we've evolved to this piece where we're discussing trees, which as I think three or four of the council members have already identified, no one wants to remove a tree. I mean, that is not part of our discussion here. What we want to do is rejuvenate downtown so that it does become a vibrant, walkable, family-friendly environment. And with the plan that we have, that does involve removal and relocation of some of the trees. Well, most of the trees, but they will be replaced. We have to consider that. And along with that fact, we do have information from a number of businesses downtown who have been hindered as a result of the root growth, getting into the sewers and causing lots of issues with their ability to operate as a viable business. And I think we can't not consider those issues when we're talking about what we want to do here. I totally agree with Nathan. I would like to see a little bit more attention given to ADA parking availability as well as the possibility of more crosswalks. We want to be a safe community. And I think that's one of our main responsibilities as council people, is that we provide a safe environment in which our constituents can live and thrive. And then I also agree with the bypass. We know we need that. We're working toward that. And it's a slow process. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, but we continue to try to make some headway with that and little steps at a time. And I think we're, we've got the attention of some people to do that and working with other partner groups to maybe gain some leverage on how we can go about getting that bypass started. And then the last thing I would mention, since that was also a large topic of discussion last week, was in terms of the monuments. And I think we do owe it to all of the people that are in support of what we're doing downtown, that we do need to look at the placement of those monuments. And I think we got, we had a breakthrough last week when we were talking about that. And, you know, some of the locations that were suggested for the monuments really.
College Hill Association talk about our arborist and how wonderful it's been to work with her. I'd like to talk to council, address council for a second, tell you something you probably already know. And that's that we're dealing with people who have a wide range of views on trees. I've spoken to some people who've insisted that we take out not one tree, no matter what, that they would be happy if we spent the entire ARPA funds on protecting even a single tree. It's been suggested to me that we just plan to replace the sidewalks every year downtown. So we have that extreme and we have others' extremes of people who don't care about trees at all. And I know, I'll also speak for myself, that I fall far closer to the "let's protect every tree" than I do "we don't care about trees at all." I heard last week that we don't do our homework as a council and for certain, we are not perfect. But I want to say that we in fact do do our homework. When Welch Comer stood before us right here and told us that, you know, the bigger trees produce less shade, it boggled my mind. I mean, as consultants, I trusted them, but I just couldn't quite see it myself. And so over the course of the summer, I spent many trips downtown, watched the sun as it moved across Main Street, trying to understand what was happening. In fact, on September 10th, Morgan, is there a chance I could get those slides up? On September 10th, it occurred to me, "Oh, my gosh, we're not going to have many more days of total sunlight downtown." So I went down there and I took some pictures. And please forgive me, council, for the quality of these photos. I really didn't think I'd be sharing them with anyone. I thought I'd be sharing them only with myself. So if we play this slideshow, it's really very short. This is 7:00 AM. I went downtown. I don't know if you can make that a little bit bigger. Again, no professional photography here. Yeah, there you go. And you can see that indeed, Main Street, well, as we're working through that, I think you can see that on the, on the left-hand side, there's the north side of Main. And at 7:00 AM, what you see is that there is abundant shade. In fact, if you want any vitamin D, you're going to have to go elsewhere for the 7:00 AM. If you take a look at the 11, if you could have the next slide there, a little less shade there. It's actually to me, perfect, kind of a dappling of shade and sunlight and it's perfect. And then again, four hours later, at 3 o'clock, next slide, please, what you see is that the downtown north side is bathed in sunlight. I wish we could zoom a little bit so that you could see that the only shade that exists, oops, there we go, the only shade that exists is the awning. And I did this on September 10th. This was well before the town hall. This was me trying to wrap my head around it. It was suggested like this week that if ever we had been downtown, we would know better. And to know that at the very hottest time of the day, when we need the shade the most, the trees are shading the upper tops of those buildings and the roofs. And maybe, maybe that's cooling the attic some, but that is doing nothing to reduce the cost of air conditioning. It's making it very unlivable. I'm a redhead. I'm a pale redhead. Every time I'm outside in the sun, I feel it. I know it when it happens. So I just want to point this out that in fact, we have done our homework. We do look at different aspects. We are not of one mind. And I think that's one of our great strengths. I'd like to also point out, there was, there was a comment last week about why is there, why did the council change its mind? Originally, they said, "Save as many trees as you can." And then in the next meeting, it was, "No, we're getting rid of all of the trees." And I'll speak for myself on that. That for me was a growing acceptance, a growing understanding of what we were facing. Because of course, we wanted to save the trees. because, of course, we wanted to save the trees. But as I realize, and I don't think transplant's an option because as soon as a jackhammer hits the sidewalk and breaks through, it's going to hit roots. And even if we have some gentle magical weaving of a jackhammer or an excavator on the city streets, we're going to distress those streets. Actually, I think the arborists call it stressing the trees, call it traumatizing them, leaving them open for wilt and rot. I'm not ready to spend a multimillion-dollar project to turn around in a year, as was suggested to me, or five, and re-spend that money again. I think most citizens of Pullman would find that offensive. And in fact, I've heard from a number of people, as has council member Parks mentioned, who said, please go ahead with the project.
Carry out what our long-range planning is. And within that, a number of these things have been talked about by other council members that I think really fit in this long-range planning bucket that I hope we can, as a part of this, get onto the docket of future meetings where we have conversations around, first of all, the bike and scooter ordinance. Now, we know that has to come back to us because it's a temporary fix right now till May. The city white tree inventory that was talked about that the College Hill Association had requested, I mean, that's something that's that long-term. The public comment upfront is another one of those. The crosswalks, I think we need to have a serious conversation around crosswalks around the whole community and work to get public input of where are the issues and talk through it. Because too often what happens is someone comes to us with a crosswalk issue and we go, what's the traffic warrant? And if the traffic, council member McCall, that traffic warrant.
This has been a pet peeve of mine. All we do is we look at warrants and statistics, and we don't look at the people who are actually occupying our streets and walkways.
And so that's, as a council, I feel that there needs to be this discussion of long-range planning around that and identifying if we have areas that are problems, just because the traffic warrant doesn't meet it, we can still at least look at how do we address it for our people. And then the bypass, as council member Wright, you know, brought up, that's another one that we need to bring back on the table because we're not going to solve the downtown piece until we actually get a bypass in place. That there's things we can do to the downtown, but we really can't make it what we want it to be until that's in play. The other one, and this was touched on with GPSA, I so appreciated them coming and reaching out and wanting to be connected, involved. If you go to National League of Cities, Pullman is actually highlighted by, as it relates to our relationship with our students and our relationship with ASW SU. We're nationally known for having that relation, having a far better relationship than most cities. And I'd like to be able to elevate that into our GPSA. And I don't know if it's a joint meeting that is ASW SU and GPSA, or if it's separate meetings, but the fact that they're reaching out to us, I think as a council, we need to take advantage and build that relationship. There were a few items that have been touched on that I think fall more into the administrative piece as I've looked at it. As we look at the dog leash piece, that's something that we're already working on, and I think that's a continuing administrative of how do we help around that way. The cybersecurity is one that I felt was, is really administrative. And then also the safety one that was around snow removal and sightlines, that's another one that is really, I think, is administrative piece. And then what that does is that leaves us down, you know, then a lot of the rest of stuff was this downtown with the trees. And I'm looking forward to our discussion as we look at it. The piece around the monuments, and what really brought it to light was seeing the monuments full-size. And what came to mind was, at what point is this an engineering project? And at what point does this monument actually become art and public art? And whether the monuments actually should be going through our public art process as a, because we have a, and so I do have a question of how do we define what is art versus not art and whether that triggers art? And if so, then we should be using the public art process as a part of that. So those, just quick on my thoughts that way. So then, so we've had the time. Now, are there specific topics that we'd like to like now jump into with the specific topics? If so, which, where do we want to start?
Could we start with the monuments, the discussion around that? I agree with comments that have been made earlier. I very much like the idea of moving that to the visitor's center and having that be a bridge between downtown and WSU. I think that's a very good, very good idea. I'd love to pursue that.
I agree. I also thought it was a great idea, and that's the power of hearing what folks have to say to improve a project, and it just makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Yes, I very much appreciated the demonstration of the monuments. I have had questions about that monument situation from the first time it was suggested to be the way it was. The idea of putting the names or plaques on a wall has been floating around ever since the Walk of Fame things became a problem in the first place. And, you know, I'm looking at those, the edifices that were constructed here in our chambers, and I just couldn't help but think of that poem by Percy Shelley, Ozymandias. I just couldn't, I just couldn't help but think of that. So, yeah, the monuments by the visitor's center or another location on a wall somewhere where people can stop, look, appreciate, maybe have some more history behind the whole evolution of it, I think would be just dandy.
Councilmember Weller.
Yeah, I think, as I mentioned last time, I think most of us did, I know Pat did as well, is, yeah, I don't think it's an appropriate place. I have talked to some citizens who have actually on their own already reached out to somebody at WSU and started that conversation and kind of, you know, testing the waters. And they were amenable, but they had to go through the correct process to kind of figure things out. So, yeah, and I think that's one of the coolest things about having everybody be so involved is we do get those really, really awesome ideas. So, yeah.
There we go. I think I already spoke my piece on the monuments, and I am on record as saying that I never liked the secondary placement of them where the four of them were together on the same side of the street. I think there were other options that we could have gone with, and it appears through the process that we just talked about that we perhaps have come up with a great solution for those. And I think that that's just great. I think that what we have developed as a result of all of this is an increased level of communication and dialogue and the fact that I don't think there is any one of us on the dais or through the miracle of Ring Central that would contradict the fact that we are listening. We hear what people are saying. We read all of the communication that comes across to us and try to make some adjustments wherever it is practical and available and within our purview to do that. And I'm hoping that this whole exercise is going to prove that. So that's where I would go with that. Thank you, Frances.
Thank you. Now, there, we can't take action tonight, but I believe we can look to staff and say, is it possible to add an agenda item to the next council meeting? Is that correct?
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, I would want to ferret out a little bit more as to what council would like to see on that agenda item, because if I can remind everybody, when we were doing our goal setting, we talked about our process of getting the agenda timely published to everybody. So the due date to get everything on this agenda into my office for review is noon tomorrow. So if we can have some concise information that staff can gather, put together an agenda item for additional discussion and possible action, we're going to do that, but we're going to ask for the council's deference to get a little extra time on this particular item, that we will publish the full agenda normal and timely. And as soon as we can wrap up a new item that we'll be starting on tomorrow, we will publish that as well, certainly before the weekend.
And I believe some of the different options that we could propose to staff would be an agenda item that either removes the Walk of Fame from the base bid or could be remove the Walk of Fame from the whole process or, and that's, would that be accurate? I'm looking again to you, Mike.
Right. I've been taking notes, and I have been listening the whole time as we were dealing with some technical problems going into this. So is the agenda item, is the intent of this one to encapsulate everything that has been discussed, or is it specifically focused to one particular thing, specifically Project Downtown?
I would say specific to Downtown, the monuments. Is that what we're talking?
I would say specific to the monument. Is that what you just said as far as?
I think there could be potential for more than one agenda item that comes out of this meeting today. And so this is that first one that's being discussed is around the Walk of Fame. And so I would look to the council, would you like the item to be removal from the base bid, so it's an alternate bid, or that it's just taken out totally? Taken out, in my opinion.
My question regarding that, though, is if we take it out, then does that remove it from eligibility to use ARPA funds for it?
I think what council is discussing and what I'm hearing is I should put together an agenda item specifically about the monuments, and I should be working with staff to talk about all the different options you have as far as leaving it in the base bid, putting it as an adult, removing it entirely, and how that would affect the timeline. Does that sound like I've captured everything properly?
Yes, that does.
Okay.
A quick question, if I may.
Please, please, Councilmember Weller.
Would that trigger a redesign of the plan, a removal of the monuments?
It would not involve a full redesign, no.
Yes, Councilmember McCall.
Another specific item that, excuse me, has come up is about the unleashed dogs and unleashed dogs and about managing dog waste. I know that this has been brought to my attention by former council member Brandon, and he said that the ballfields, of course, are a special attention of his. And he says, with the amount of loose dogs that are on the ballfields, it brings a whole new meaning to the word scooping up a hot grounder. Brandon gets credit for that. So anyway, could we request maybe an action plan from code enforcement or other appropriate parties as to what could be done in terms of making our system work better?
Yes, I just think asking us to get it on the next agenda might be a little too soon. Can we ask for the 24th of October for?
Yeah, just asking for the, just asking, just making the request.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, whatever you think works best.
Sure, I was still on the next week vote, so I apologize. I didn't move as fast as you did on that one.
Yeah.
And as council holds out something agreement? Councilmember Guido.
So speaking specifically about ADA requirements and compliance with our sidewalks, first of all, I want to say I am certainly not a climate change denier. And what I am is someone who's very concerned about our sidewalk safety. And if you recall, at the town hall meeting, I talked about my 90-year-old there who's trying to navigate the sidewalks. It was brought to my attention today by someone, a citizen, who said it would be helpful to hear exactly what that means when you say an ADA compliance with our sidewalks. So that would be helpful to hear from someone like Sean as our Public Works Director. But before I do that, I do have a story to tell about a friend of mine who was walking downtown in January and did trip over the heaving sidewalks and sustained fractures, serious fractures to her pelvis. And basically said, I concentrated on healing and I didn't think about calling the city or taking any action against the city. But that's what we're talking about as far as compliance, because we are responsible for that as a city. The sidewalks are not safe. So as far as I'm concerned, we dodged a bullet, and we need to be on that. So if you don't mind talking about what does it mean to be ADA compliant in terms of the slope? I know the consultants did talk about that, but I think it would be helpful for people to hear that.
Yeah, we're not prepared for that discussion tonight, so we'll put something together for you on a future date on that. That's a little more breadth and depth than we've been prepared to for this discussion tonight. I apologize.
Well, I can say what I heard from the consultant, which was that to be ADA compliant, it's a 2% slope, no more than a 2% slope, which is basically flat. And we do not have that as anybody can see when you're walking the sidewalks. So that's my.
Yes, we, staff agrees with that. If that's all you wanted to confirm, I just didn't know if you wanted like a full presentation on the slope.
No, just basically, you know, is that what we're talking about, which is a flat sidewalk, and we're certainly not in compliance.
Correct. The 2% cross-slope is the typical percentage to assessable compliance there. Curb ramps are a different story, so they have the ability to get up to a certain angle and elevation, but they do have to have some that are very flat once you reach the top of that ramp, and then you can go along the road. So there's very different rules depending on what area of the sidewalk we're talking about. And that's what Mike was saying, is we're not really, we're prepared tonight to talk specifics about all of those.
Councilmember Doobin.
Yeah, thank you. Then I would like to talk about the sidewalks just a little bit more. My understanding from talking to city staff and the arborists is that we face a problem with the sidewalks and the trees. Our trees are not average urban trees, although we know that urban trees have a limited lifespan because they are encased in concrete and asphalt. We've talked about that a lot. Our trees are still a little bit different because their roots did not grow down and out. Those roots grew out. And this makes a huge problem. Some, the estimates are that they're 30 feet out. It's part of the reason we can't transplant, because we cannot dig out that root ball without taking up like all of the infrastructure. So we have that problem. As soon, as I said this earlier, a jackhammer or an excavator starts removing the concrete and the asphalt, we start damaging the roots. And here's one of the problems with that, is I imagine myself standing on the street with a jackhammer, trying to very gently jackhammer, and say I slip, I miss, and I hit a root, and I know probably based on the damage that's done, that that tree is probably not going to live. In that moment, I don't know which tree that root belongs to. Can't figure that out. I could decide it's the one closest to me when it's actually one further down because of this intricate web. So even if we didn't hit, say, we were somehow able to work through that lattice, that lace of the roots, which is highly unlikely, we would still run the risk, and I'm, forgive me, unfamiliar, ventricular wilt of causing enough stress to. I'm, forgive me, unfamiliar, ventricular wilt, of, of causing enough stress to, to create that, so that we wouldn't know it at the time, but a year later, these trees could start dying. My concern with that is that if we decide to keep those trees downtown, keep them in the middle of the sidewalk, what we would end up with in very short order is a row of stumps down the middle of our sidewalk, where we had to take the trees out slowly as they died. I, I'm just bringing this up because of the ADA issues that councilmember Guido just mentioned, and that every time we have to disturb those sidewalks, we are risking the ADA, we're spending more money, and it's highly likely that we would have these trees a year after the project. Thank you.
Let me, let me jump in on trees, and, and, you know, during, during the town hall, and, and leading up the town hall, there were some different proposed methods for sidewalk repair, for types of sidewalks, that what would be, for me, that would be helpful is to, to know, have those been evaluated within, when we went through the process? Because when I, when I went and did some of my own independent research, I couldn't find on some of the sidewalks where they'd actually been, been approved for Washington State Code. I found test plots of where they've been used, but I, but I, but I want to make sure that they're approved, and, and part of this question gets into, and I don't, and I'm gonna look to staff on, on this one, is whether this is something that can be brought to us, is what, if, if the tree have the roots that are growing out, you have the sidewalks on top, and the sidewalks are buckling, at what point of the height of the sidewalk buckle do we actually need to cut roots in order to replace the sidewalk, whether it's with, with the design that we have, or with one of the designs that have been proposed, in order to do an evaluation of, these are how many healthy trees we have, these are how many that currently aren't, these are how many that we're gonna lose just doing the sidewalk repair, even if we do the, the least invasive sidewalk repair? And then this, and then in companion with that is, we also need to do the infrastructure sewer, and how many trees are we gonna lose because of the work that has to be done with the sewer, even if we do it in the least invasive way? Most of the conversations have been around sidewalks, and it hasn't talked about the sewer and the impact for us to do the sewer work, what, what damage will be done. Related to the communication piece, that's, I don't feel we've done a good job to say that we've done our due diligence, communication-wise, related to that, and so I, so that's something that I'd like to hear, because maybe in the midst of it, there are solutions, and, so that's, that's my perspective. And, Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Councilmember Benjamin. So I know we've kind of been tiptoeing around this, so, I guess I'm not going to. So, as, as Councilmember Benjamin mentioned, there are three options that we are given, okay? We, there are. And, you know, I had gone over three options in, in my head, and, and Mike and I kind of talked about a little bit of these. There's stay the course, okay? Just change nothing, move forward, all right? Keep the trees, all of the trees, but redo the sidewalks. Now, when I talk to Mike, of course, this is not ideal, in another, you know, five years, possibly, we'd have to redo the sidewalks again, and it'd cost $2 million, and then what do you do with the other six? Not redoing any of the streets, anything like that. And then redesign, find something. In my mind, especially, like, sitting here with all the awesome ideas that came out of it, and all the amazing experts that, that came out of the work, because they're, they have their own jobs they're doing, and they're coming to us, and they're like, "I've got an idea about this, floating sidewalks, this sort of stuff, and while I can't necessarily be done experimentally in the downtown," because we were talking about this, "we would want to try it on a side area, or a different area than right, experiment with it in the downtown." It's an awesome idea, and other people think so, too. Do you want to say something, Mike?
No, I'd just like an opportunity, after you've finished, I apologize.
Okay, cool. You know, what's kind of cool about this is that we do have an opportunity to kind of look at things differently, and I know there are the financial concerns and this sort of stuff, but I met with some people, I, I was talking to Monique Slifer, I was talking with Dr. Politz, Bobby, Lisa, so on and so forth. Is there a middle way? Can we find a middle way for all of it? To, to maybe not make everybody ecstatic, but make everybody a little less pissed off? And it's my opinion, you know, I, I've heard the things about the age of the tree, so I went into that, we received an email, trees will only last like 28 years. So I looked into it, a few different sites, they said, "Well, you know, averages are tricky. You have an average of a, a tree that may last five years, and then one that may last 70 years." And so they take that average, somewhere 28, something like that. But you can't really say that it's just going to suddenly die on its 28th birthday. And, you know, when we were looking at root damage, and so on and so forth, Welch Comer did talk to us about, it would cost more for the contractor to be careful around the roots. It has been done in other areas. And so I was thinking, well, you know, the bike lane, so the, the civic trust wants a separated bike lane. Tree people, save the trees, want to keep the trees, is there a way to just put it on the other side of the current existing trees? Now, we will have to, regardless of what choice is made, remove diseased trees, we just need to do that. Now, it's not, it's not a lot, but there are a few, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, there are a few that have been determined as diseased. Now, looking into the tilting and so on and so forth, that's where bringing in a third party, arborist, master, forester, it would be encouraged to see what roots would actually continue lifting, and which have actually remained stationary at this point, because from what, from what I have been told from people much smarter than myself in the agriculture field, is that the trees, to get to the size they are, had to have, had to have tapped down to subsurface water, and that the buttress roots are actually the ones that are lifting the sidewalks, not the ones that are further out. So while some roots possibly are going further out, some of them are going down, and we got to keep in mind, Pullman was the Artesian, you know, city. I mean, there, there is that subsurface water, it's still there. I do also want to say, and I think I was remiss in saying this last time, Pullman has received, and I know this may surprise some people, the Tree City Award for the last 26 years. So, I mean, we care, but I do feel that there's a middle way that we can find. I know the fears of, of the money and so on are, are there, but I do feel there's a middle way that we can find, so.
Thank you. If I can just add real...
Yes.
Quick, I, just for a point of clarification for those that'll be watching later or listening now, I meet with councilmembers on a regular basis, on many different topics, and during the meeting that Councilmember Weller is referring to, I'm there to provide information as he searches for what his answers are, that I'm not editorializing my own or my staff's piece, we're just trying to provide the best information for council to make decisions, and that was the genesis of our conversation, so I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, my apologies.
No, no apology necessary, I just wanted to clarify.
You're my Wiki.
Okay.
Councilmember McCall?
I, I think there's some things that can be done with the bike path that don't necessarily, I think that's kind of a side issue, and I think it definitely needs to be looked at and maybe clarified, but I, but what I really do think needs to be clarified in sort of my opening statement is the impact of this process on the infrastructure. Those trees are not endangered species, we are not talking about the last of the buffalo or passenger pigeons. This is, these trees can be replaced with good sizable trees that are much more appropriate to the location, but the infrastructure is the heart and soul, the roots, if you will, sorry about that one, of our community. So when we're asking people to invest in our community, to maybe put in a new building, or to rehab a new building, you know, what do we say to them about our sewer system? Well, let's see, I think we're still working with Orangeburg here, you know, you can't build a new city on Orangeburg, I mean, come on! And, and we have to have those, we have to have the infrastructure, we have to have the power systems, the water systems, the sewer systems, stormwater, I'm telling you, there's nothing more dangerous than stormwater when you get in a situation. So those are the important things, if it would be possible, and it's probably not possible, but in the best of an ideal world, we would have maybe a, a presentation about detailing the infrastructure of where we're headed. The plans are very detailed, they're excellent, I have absolute faith in the engineering, but they're often hard public to understand, because these emotional issues, like trees, like sidewalks, have a tendency to ignore what is literally below the surface. So I think those explanations of how contemporary, modern, up-to-date infrastructure would affect the, the fate of our community, our business community, going forward. You can't put in certain types of equipment because of our aging infrastructure, you just can't. And if we want to grow our, our businesses, our communities, we want those jobs downtown, we have to have the infrastructure that supports that. We can regrow a tree, you know, a 50-year infrastructure, a 100-year infrastructure that, that is aging out on us, is not as easily replaced as a tree, sad but true.
And I think what, some, one of the items you're specifically referring to is the clay sewer lines that are running through there, and they have a 50-year life, and those are, yeah.
Way, we are way beyond that.
Councilmember Dubin?
Yeah, I would just tag on to that, as a, as a reminder to everyone, that when we begin to take up the street, we don't know what we're going to find in terms of infrastructure underneath there. It may take the full ARPA funds to confront that, and if that's true, I guess a part of me is kind of celebrating that we found it before it found us, you know, and that there's something that we can take care of. I would hate for anyone to think that, you know, we started going and gave up on the beautification, but of course, you know, we've got to take care, as, as Councilmember McCall's saying, we've got to take care of that infrastructure first. And anybody who's watching what's happening in Walla Walla, as a sump underneath the Marcus Whitman, the Marcus Whitman's been closed for weeks, because gasoline from the gas station next door leaked underneath and leaked to the post office. And while I don't think that's happening right now, I am aware that there used to be a gas station on the corner of Grand and Main, many gas stations in our downtown, way before the EPA existed. Like, so whatever things I were following, so the probability that we're gonna find something we don't like, I think is, is up there.
Councilmember Guido?
Again, just to, to tag on that, we just had a recent example of someone throwing a rock into the South Fork of the river, and breaking a, what appears to be a very ancient, 100-year-plus, is what we found out, water pipe, and we were all witness to how long that took to, to fix. That's one element, and we know that we are looking at that, once we lift up Main Street and see what's involved, and that, if we can make that very clear tonight, it's, it's that this is an infrastructure project first and foremost, that's what the ARPA money is going to be used, and we have no idea how much is going to take of the 8 million or so that are remaining, once we lift that up and see what, what's happening. So all of this other stuff could be for moot, I mean, it, it really could.
So I know there were a couple requests related to additional information, is that something that as a council you're interested in, in, in hearing?
I would like to hear additional information about some of this stuff. I think the floating sidewalks would be an interesting discussion for the future. I think when Welch Comer talked to us, they said that we could do these improvements, we could do the fixes, and save the trees. And that's what they told us, and they said it might be more expensive, but we could do it. So I'm, I would like to possibly see those three options again, but I can, you know, I understand if this is something that, you know, I only feel.
Councilmember Guido? I mean, Dubin, sorry.
My understanding is, it's the way the trees have grown, those outspread roots that make it so very difficult to do that. Welch Comer, you know, really doesn't care whether we, what we do with the trees, right? They're, they're impartial third-party, they don't, they're not invested in, in what we're doing necessarily, they're just giving advice, and if we said, "Well, we would like to jackhammer through the lattice of the roots," they would say, "You can try," I think. I'm, I'm not convinced that is viable at all. Even though that's been done in other communities, we are different because of the way those roots have grown.
I think that...
Councilmember Weller?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, my bad. Please.
Councilmember Weller? Sorry, I was trying to...
Sorry. Well, Welch Comer, it may not be their goal, but even with our own, and I appreciate Monique sending this, even with our, our own project goals from 10-5-22, our own city of Pullman Urban Forestry, it says safely manage and protect existing urban street tree canopy with project extents when possible. So, if possible, I mean, yeah, you know, these could go out 30, 40 feet, or they could go down 10, 15 feet, we don't know, but what we do know is that there are experts out there who can look into it. And so Welch Comer, I know, I'm, I'm looking at the goals, none of them has protected a tree, none of them. But the ISA arborist is, the urban forestry that we have is, so, yeah, I agree, I just think there's a middle way that we can find, and I think we are given those.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody also that we have had business and building owners downtown actually complain about the present trees, and how they are starting to impact onto the buildings, damaging the awnings. That was part of the impetus for this project, was to, as it, as it developed, to say, "Okay, well, let's, let's not just rip up everything and fix the concrete, but let's also address some of these other issues," and that was one of them.
So, Councilmember Wright, I'm just expecting, if you want to speak, you'll raise your hand, so, so that's why I haven't called on you?
That's all right, Councilmember Benjamin, I appreciate that. I guess I'd just like to address the elephant in the room right now, and that is that we are almost literally past the point of no return on this project in terms of putting it out to bid. And the longer that we wait to do that, the more delay we're... And the longer that we wait to do that, the more delay we're going to have and the more it's going to cost us. I just need to throw that out there because in addition to our being the, trying to be the guardians for the safety of our citizens, we also are supposed to be good sewers of our taxpayer dollars, and those are being 100% implicated at this point. So I know what I've just said is not popular, but it needed to be put out there.
Councilmember Guido?
So along those lines, and Nathan, I think you were going there in terms of the different options, but you didn't pick up on the final one, which was to pause the project. And I want to understand what the implications are from a bid standpoint. I know there are financial ramifications, certainly, but which was, oops, what would be the implications on our proposed bid schedule, which was, if I remember, October 18th, to put out the bid?
That is the bid schedule as was submitted, and any pause would mean that we would be putting it out later. And I just want to be clear on the definition of pause, because we've talked a lot about We've discussed this at length in staff, and the best way I can describe a pause is if I'm watching a movie with my wife and I want to use the restroom, I hit pause, and I go use the restroom, and I come back and want to hit play, I expect the same movie to be on at the exact same spot I left off. So is that what you're asking, or are you asking for a redesign?
I think the only reason why we would do a pause is to look at a redesign. That's what I'm hearing. So in my mind, that would be why we would pause, and what would be the implications of doing a redesign?
The implications of doing a redesign, it would totally change the timeline, depending on how deep and what type of redesign you would like. The first piece is we would have to describe the scope and then go back to Welch Comer and see if they could give us a price and if they're even interested in doing this because we've already paused them once, and they did turn down business to continue our work. So any redesign that's going to change the street will require all those reports that we turned into DOT to be redone, as well as re-examined by the DOT. So it depends how deep of a redesign is to how long that timeline gets pushed out.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. Could we look at a pause in a different way, and that would be more phases? So we go ahead with our proposed bidding process right now, which is an infrastructure project. So tearing up the concrete and, I mean, doing the work, but, well, no, that doesn't, sorry, that doesn't really work. I don't know. I just, I am not in favor of a pause because I think our city has agreed, has been okay with us pausing it last year because of the reason we had to. I think if we say we're going to pause it again, and we have received this feedback from people not in this room, and there are many who have fed us this input, that said, don't do it, just keep, stay the course, and please, please make improvements to our downtown. So, I mean, I think at some point we have to make the decision, and I guess what I thought about phasing was maybe while we're in it, or as we're, depending on what kind of infrastructure damage that we, or condition that we find based on what Councilmember Dubin said, there's a lot we don't know until we get the shovels out. We just don't know. And so I'm just reticent to pause this entire project when there's a lot we don't know. But what we do know is that we want to improve our streets and our sidewalks.
Sure. If the direction is to go through a redesign, and we're looking at putting it out again to bid this time next year, keeping the same basic schedule, staff's concern is that when we receive those bids on, at the end of November, and we can't afford to do the work because whatever money we're going to spend redesigning comes out of the work, then we have four weeks left to get whatever million, 7 million, whatever's left, under contract to be able to take advantage of the ARPA dollars. And we're good, but we're not that good. Trying to, in 2024, at the end of November, seeing the costs have gone to where we can't afford it, that we need to have those monies obligated under contract by the end of that year, otherwise we lose the ARPA money. That is our biggest concern from a staff, that we won't be able to do it, because we'll have to turn to other projects that we haven't even, and asking us to run parallel projects just in case, that's a staff time that we're going to need a lot more help with consultants and those items. So that, again, continues to take that ARPA dollars down. So I guess, again, if it's a redesign, we'd want to hear what that scope is so we can go back to the consultants, because that's the easiest way. The hardest way is if they're not interested, or we go with a different one, we'd have to go through the RFQ process of finding new consultants again and having them rework this item. What we have purchased, I want to check this contract again, is the plans, but all the work that went into that, that's proprietary to the, to Welch Comer. So another consultant would almost be starting on scratch, doing some of the things that they've been working on for the last several months. So it could be done, but we got to do a lot of legwork for you very quickly. Today's the third, two weeks. So we would want to define what that scope is so we can start negotiating with Welch Comer as to a cost and a timeline.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCall?
Thank you. So you just explained in a very earnest and detailed way of what a pause could cost us in oh-so-many ways, but I like your first example the best. When you push pause on your movie, it stops and you get to start right back over again. There's no such thing in that, in this project. Everything changes. The calendar changes, the cost of materials changes, cost of labor changes, everything changes. There's no such thing, really, as pause. It's a polite phrase that we're using, but it doesn't happen. We went to buy some gravel the other day, and we found that the price had dropped by half since the last time we priced it. That was a bonus, but we know darn good and well that things aren't going to go down. That was a rare exception. But there really is no such thing as pause. We're into this by $1.8 million as it is. A lot of that will just be put on the shelf if we, there really is no such thing as pause. You know, COVID and ARPA and created a very, very unusual circumstance, but to say that we could pause this is a misnomer. I mean, it simply is not, it just doesn't exist in the way people hope that it could.
Councilmember Dubin, and then Councilmember Wright?
And we're in 1.8 million because the citizens of Pullman have told us that's what they wanted, so it became our goal, a council goal, to get this done. I think we're in a lot of trouble if we risk getting this project done. This is our chance. Who else? What other grant are we going to get when they find out, oh, you had the money, you had the plans, and you just didn't go ahead and do it? So I'm really concerned about a pause.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. I just want to be clear on something that people understand this totally. The funds have to be obligated by the end of 2024 and expended by the end of 2026. Is that correct?
I'm not 100% on the end of 2026. There's part of my little reptilian brain that's saying October. I would want to look that up.
Well, it's 20, it's 2026. It's towards the end of 2026.
It is, it is towards the end of 2026.
Okay. So that, that having been said, the other part of this is that Main Street, of course, is the largest piece of this project. But in addition to that, we're also talking about Grand, and we're also talking about Paradox. And so those, if we continue to compress the Main Street project, then we're really compressing those other two projects. Granted, they're not nearly as large as Main Street is, but we have to be giving that some consideration as well. And again, in trying to be good stewards of these taxpayer dollars. Excuse me.
So we messaged this meeting from 7 to 9, so we do have a hard stop at 9, so we're down to about 30 minutes. I want to make sure everything is covered, and so are there any, right now, the, we've asked for the Walk of Fame options to be on the next meeting, we've asked for the Unleashed Dogs report at a future meeting. Are there any other items coming out of, that we want to talk about? Councilmember McCall?
Yeah, maybe a brief and a practical explanation, presentation about the emphasis on the infrastructure piece that is often difficult for people to understand. So if our engineers or whoever would be the best people for that could do a presentation soon that, for public, for the sake of the public, to understand the infrastructure implications of what we're doing. Because like I said, it's below the surface, it is sometimes hard to see and hard to understand.
I understand.
So is that something realistic for our next meeting, or would that need to be further out?
That meeting will be further out.
Okay.
Certainly before.
Councilmember Benjamin?
Certainly before the end of November.
Councilmember Wright, and then Councilmember Weller?
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have is relative to the ADA piece that we were talking about, both with parking and crosswalks. If we were to change anything in the current plan now, am I correct in understanding that that would also require a redraw?
That's what I thought.
They're consulting.
I see that. Thank you.
I guess they are there in your view.
So just as a clarification, to make sure we're giving you, any redesign of this project would require a redraw. Any removal of any item would just require an update. But where crosswalks went and widths and anything that we changed there would trigger, anything we're doing out in the street would trigger not only a redesign, it would trigger doing all those Department of Transportation reports and having the Department of Transportation review them at whatever speed they do. If it goes quickly because they've already seen most of it, we don't, we don't know that.
Okay. That's my question. That couldn't be addressed later as a euphemistically calling it a change order?
Is there a specific item that you're, like, a change order for us would be changing the species and the quantities of trees? That would not, that would not require a redesign unless it's a massive change, like we're putting in 80-foot trees with a 40-foot piece. But I'm assuming almost a like-for-like, like a 15-foot canopy for a 25-foot canopy, those types of things. I think anything more than that, yeah, there'd be some different design elements that would need to be readdressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you. Just wanted to address, if there are awnings that trees are damaging, then, you know, that's on us. We should be trimming them back. And, you know, I would hope that businesses would come to us. I'm kind of seeing that I'm on the minority here. So Mike, you're saying anything in the street would have to go to WashDOT and require a redesign, right?
Depending on the scope of the changes, if it's going to go into the street, if we're going to move a sidewalk, if we're going to change locations for these types of things, if we're going to affect bulbouts, those types of items will affect many things down the line and have, you know, a cascading effect on those. And, yeah, there'd be a redesigned piece with the consultant, which would trigger addendums, changes to the reports.
And what I'm understanding is on the street, if, or on the sidewalk, would not require WashDOT approval, but would require a redesign?
If we were maintaining our sidewalks, removing like-for-like, that would just be a redesign. I'm sure a lot of the work that's already been done on that would make that fairly expedient if all we're doing is replacing the existing sidewalk.
Okay. But the change of the monuments does not technically count as a redesign?
That would be a deletion.
Okay.
And if the guidance from the council is to make it a bid alternative, that would be a change to the bid documents as well. That this, I can say this one with certainty because we have had this specific discussion with the consultant.
And I know, so the bid schedule is October. That's the most ideal, is what you're saying.
The bid schedule that was sent several weeks ago was developed by the consultant and staff who does a lot of project bidding, and said this is the most ideal to get the most amount of people, the most competitive bid with the best contractors available because everybody's trying to line up their work for next year, while trying to keep on that timeline that we talked about being buttoned up by the first football game.
Okay, but bids can go out at other times of the year.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. There's a period in the year where it'd be the worst time of year, just like there's a best time of year.
And we've already looked at other, the, and I'll bring it again, and I know I've been guilty of hammering, so I'll try not to hammer, but I would like to hammer on this point. We were given three options, and Welch Comer has those three options currently in their designs. And if we were to go, so they gave us three options.
Yeah, the first option was keep as many trees as possible. The second one was keep about half the trees, and the third option, which council selected on November 15, was the path that we've been working towards now.
So if we were to look at those designs again, I mean, they already have them in there. It wouldn't need to be a complete redesign, would it? Or is it, am I mistaken?
So you're talking, just so I'm clear, if you chose options one or two, you're just talking about leaving the trees that are there plus adding more trees to the edge?
Whatever the option, I don't have them in front of me.
Those were the options. Option one was keep as many trees as possible exactly where they are. Option two is selective, get rid of about half of them.
What I'm talking about is the expediency of it. We've talked about the, we've talked about the money aspect, we've talked about the infrastructure, and what I'm trying to get across is Welch Comer had said that all of these things can be done with one, two, or three, and that they already have the designs of one, two, or three. We just chose three.
No, they quit working on designs one and two after you chose three.
But one, two, or three, all included infrastructure improvement. Was that correct?
I believe so.
So those designs are there. Now.
They're not fully designed out.
They're not full design, but they've already gone through a significant portion of what would have to be done for a redesign.
Yes.
So I'm just going to leave that as an explanation, that I do feel the expediency of what we're saying with the, with the funds and the timing and everything. It can be done. And I do want to address something else that was said, and I think it was said kind of offhand. Keeping the trees does not mean. Keeping the trees does not mean destroying the businesses or anything like that, or not improving the downtown. It's just about which option we chose. And if we chose wrong, admitting that we chose wrong and choosing something else, growing from that experience, given new information. So I want to make sure that people understand, this is not business versus trees, this is not ADA versus trees. These were all looked at in those options. So I'm not anti-development, I'm not anti-downtown. I'm not even necessarily, you know, trees everywhere. I'm saying there is a middle way that we can find, that we have options for, that can be done in a certain amount of time and can be implemented. So I'm done hammering.
Council. Councilmember Guido and Dubin.
Thank you. And Nathan, I so appreciate your passion and your search for a middle way. Actually, the reason we chose the third option was because of the destruction the first two options would create. When you talk about the awnings, it's not, oh, they should call and have those branches trimmed. It's actually the circumference of the tree itself. You'd have to chop the tree like in half, because the circumference is growing and getting really close to the awnings, and would begin to press in. So that itself would damage the tree. I mean, I don't know what happens when you chop a tree in half. I assume it dies. So the, and the thing with the ADA, for example, is if we keep those remaining trees, those, a couple of things happen. One is, we have to worry about the roots coming back up and again disrupting that slope. But two, the trees are already suffering and dying because of the way they've been planted. We know they're suffering because their roots are looking for air and water, because their roots are circling around the root ball and strangling themselves. We know they are stressed and are going to get much more so in the next five years. And we see that some of those trees are already dying from that. We chose option three because the other two were not viable.
So if I may just address.
I just want you to check, councilmember Wright, your hand's still up. Is that, okay. So councilmember Weller?
So I need to address that, because actually, I have the report right here. And the trees are not unhealthy. Yes, you're right. Several of them are. And those were the ones that were intended to be removed. But a majority of them are actually very healthy, and in the original report, we're told that you can keep them. So in addition to that, I think it's important to mention that the awnings.
Order in the gallery, please.
It's okay. It's fine. So I just wanted to mention that those trees, the majority of them are healthy. And the root system, the trees are mature, actually. So they've already reached their mature age. Their circumference is not growing. The actual, so, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I talked to somebody, an arborist, and it's important to mention so that there's not crossed wires. So I respect what you're saying, I just want to make sure. The majority are healthy, and the trees growing in is a part of what our responsibility as a city is, to be able to take care of those trees and to take care of the branches that are going into the awnings. So I just, I just wanted to mention that, but I do also appreciate what you're saying.
Okay. I have one item that I'd like to bring up, if, since I see a pause here, and this has to do, as it relates to Pine Street Plaza. That's something that if, personally for me, if work is done in Pine Street Plaza, we need to make it whole, if, if we're, if we're going to do work. But I'm, but I would, I would entertain for staff to be able to come back as it relates to Pine Street Plaza, of what are our options as it relates, do we have to do this, relying doing there, or other options? Or is this something where we can separate out Pine Street Plaza from the base bid? And actually, is my thought.
I think it's a stormwater line, isn't it?
It's a stormwater line, but are there other options where that stormwater line could run?
Good, thank you, Francis.
That is less disruptive? And is that something that, in that conversation, is it a longer conversations where we would need to separate it from the base bid and have that looked at separately?
It's already separated from the base bid.
Okay.
Because we want to make sure that there is a base bid, that when it's bid on, there's a reasonable chance that we're going to be able to afford it. And we just didn't think that the Pine Street Plaza piece would make it, so it is a bid alternative. So when the base bid comes in, and if there is money, and the council wishes to do that work across Pine Street, there is the ability to award it. But it is not necessary and required as part of the base bid right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? As I look to staff, is there anything, any, any items that you have for us related to what we've talked about?
No, I think we got a, we got a good work planned for next week and the following weeks. We'll put in an agenda item for discussion, and I'll leave it open enough. So if there is a subtlety that I missed, there's a way to tag on to that. Is that the parking spots? Is that what you're talking? From Matt's email earlier today. Okay, yeah, and just a correction. We went back through the parking plan, and there is more than the required amount of ADA stalls that are being put into this project right now.
Yes.
And if there's more that wants to be done later, that's something that we would consider a change order, because we're talking about paint on a street.
Are they going to be on Main? Is any of them going to be on Main?
Three on Main, right?
This whole project is on Main, yes.
My understanding is every block has.
Every block.
Every block has parking. It has.
What I'm checking about is, is, you know.
Van accessible.
North, you know, I mean, over by Grand, and so on and so forth, you know, by Rico's, by, you know, these sorts of areas. Yeah? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Outside of that, I will have a cursory discussion with Welch Comer and talk to them about what a redesign would look like and a timeline for that. I'm sure they'll just give us a rage, because there is no scope, a specific scope yet for that, so I'll be able to give you a better jumping off point on that, as well as include option one or option two, how long it would take to design that piece, and bring it back as part of this discussion as well. Before the end of the month, an infrastructure presentation, and certainly get with the police chief and code enforcement and talk about the dogs. What did I miss?
So we had those four, the Walk of Fame, the dogs, the infrastructure overview, and then this last one, around the redesign and timeline, and what would it take to expand, to flesh out the two options that were not selected, which is what you just.
Okay.
So those are the four items that I, that I believe we settled with.
I will huddle with staff, we'll hustle on the monument item, because I know you guys want to see that at the next council meeting next week. And coming into that next council meeting, we'll have a work planned for those other three items, so you know when those are coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items or topics? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.